Call the meeting to order at seven and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments to the agenda? Any amendments needed?
Yes, sir. I have two tonight. There was a request for a water abatement and a request to have a water agreement.
Want that under new business?
Yeah, under new business, please.
Okay, is there other amendments? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amendments? A motion by Jeff, seconded by Ron. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 27th as written.
They're second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff, to approve the July 27th minutes. Any corrections needed or changes?
No.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Five minutes for public comment.
I got one.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is some stuff that I spoke to you outside about. This is more of a positive thing. I noticed you guys doing the policy review thing, which is awesome, cool, keeps it all, you know, on our codes, Moby knows, good and bad account. You put feedback. How about, since it's two weeks in between meetings, throw it up on Facebook so you feel like, hey, this is what the policy is. What would the townspeople like to see? How would the townspeople like to get some public feedback so that way it works and, you know, get some more feedback on, or make more conclusive policy.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Yeah.
That's the only thing I have.
Okay. Others? Public comment? Jay?
Yeah, I'm asking about the hole here on the corner of West and Main Street. Is that being taken care of?
So the, we're waiting for the pavers to come in in September. Right now, the guys are doing their best to take care of it, but it does get a little potholy.
Why don't we just do it? I mean, you don't have to be a rocket scientist and beg to hold it. I mean, it's gonna cost, if that project is already costing over $4,000 for four hours of work. Am I correct?
Um, no. Actually, that bill came in and it was, I think, $2,500.
All right, even so, $2,500 for four hours of work. It's gonna cost you $1,000. That's quite good, right? You're telling me we can't do it ourselves? We have the agreed settlement.
We, we do have...
Got all you, but I just wanna know why we're not doing it. If we're gonna keep subbing stuff out, you know, we might as well lay everybody out and sub all the work. Because it'd be, it'd be saving money.
So, so that spot, I understand that the guys do lay down pavement in certain locations. That spot in particular was just paved last year and the year before down West Street. We thought because it's new pavement, it would be best to have a professional lay that down so that way it better blends with, with the new pavement. Our guys, they're good at a lot of things. They're not pavers, though, so it, it wouldn't be as, as good as a professional job.
That's a fair response, Joe, but when, when is that scheduled?
September 15th.
September 15th?
Middle of September, the pavers will be in town.
My second thing is, I heard from people a couple of weeks ago, I guess I wanna know why the chairman of the board here is trying to stop development in our town. I don't think it's right. You're supposed to be here on this board to promote business, not stop it. I feel you're just doing it on your own agenda. I wanna know what's going on. I wanna know why you're trying to stop Stewart's.
Okay, any other comments?
I got more, but I'm reading through the answer. Has there been a settlement? Has there been, are they going ahead with the project? What's going on?
You can ask Joe. I'm not sure if they're moving forward or not.
Has there been a settlement on, on your, on your complaint?
The, me?
On his complaint.
There was a settlement, yes.
Was there a cash settlement?
The town has no idea.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Chris. Was there a cash settlement?
I have no comment on the matter.
Well, you know something? You should have a comment because you're supposed to be a public servant here.
Yep, and I'm also a citizen of the town.
Yeah, but when you, when you signed on here as a selectman, you, that's your job.
Do you have any other public comment?
I have a lot of public comments, but I think it's wrong. Personally, I think you should, you should resign from the board for what you've done. You've insulted our select, you insulted our select...
Well, that's not gonna happen. Move on. No, I'm not gonna wait up.
You've insulted our planning board, you've insulted our zoning board, and our zoning administrator. They worked very hard to go through all these, all this stuff to make sure what they issued for a permit was right. And all you did was just stop and hell of a project. And somewhere, I'll find out what the settlement was. If I ever call the attorney general, I'll find out. Because what you did was wrong. You shouldn't be, you shouldn't be sitting on this floor. You have your own legend that you're worried about.
Yeah, that's not true.
You're not worried about the town's response. You're not worried about the town. And I think it's wrong that a selectman will sit here and do something like this to the town.
All right, well, that's your opinion. Appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment? John?
Just a quick side note. Going back to Jay Brown and the roads.
Yep.
When it comes to actually paving roads and doing full resurfacing, we look at the underneath, like pipes and stuff, to see if we could replace them before we go ahead and lay brand new asphalt down and cut into it like a year later. Because that seems to be like a really bad habit for area.
Joe can answer that more thoroughly. I believe we're doing that. You know, we've got a project over on Furnace Street. We're trying to get the infrastructure underneath the road done before. I know Joe can fill you in on a little bit of that.
Yeah, that's, that was what we were doing. We're not doing that anymore. Projects like the Furnace Street project, we're taking care of the water drainage issue before pavement happens. Project out front, before they paved, state pavement, we coordinated with them to run line before pavement went down. That was an unexpected break. That wasn't a planned paving. It has been a trouble area, but the replacement cost was millions of dollars. So we did, we did look at it, but it was just out of the budget. I feel you on that, though, and we don't wanna keep doing what we were doing. One thing, I agree with you.
Last year, when we did a debate on all the side streets, one of the things we did, we made sure, we checked, as much as they could check for the paving that's already over. To stop the paving that, you know, might have problems with sewer or water, you know, that day. And I think the, last year, I think our supervisor, you know, he did a lot of checking. And I think he did a good job, so we knew exactly where we could do it without disturbing. Even some of the drainage, they would all, and raise drain holes so it'd walk along. The drainage would be better. I think, I know previously in the past, this stuff wasn't thought about, but the last, I know last year's paving was a great project. There was a lot of thought put into it. And a lot of checking before, you know, any paving like that.
I'm not, I'm not trying to throw a camera on someone. I'm not trying to say, hey, let's throw a sticky note on someone's brain somewhere, you know?
It's perfect. It makes perfect sense.
That's all, that's my two cents on it.
Joe?
So to that point, too, and I don't know if the board, if I told the board yet or not, there, I talked to the state so we could coordinate our revitalization projects downtown with their paving plan. And in 2024, they intend to pave downtown Fairhaven, the Class 1 section.
Again?
Yeah, from the bridge, like up through the village.
That was paid, that was paid the last year. I had my truck in there. It was six years ago.
Say hello. Look it up.
All the way up to the Councilman's Corner.
Yeah, but we're coordinating with that. I, I 100% get what you're saying. I agree.
Do you know what kind of pipes are down underneath the preparking when they go to that? Or, 'cause I know a lot of the pipes under there are all, you know, having vibrating machines, all their conement makes or something.
It, it might, yeah. I, I don't know offhand.
I don't wanna see, you know, us laying that down and then two months later, we have to burn it back up because somebody overlooked something.
I think the only thing you're gonna see is a lot of burning, not just drainage.
It's just drainage?
Because I believe the water pipes go down on the end of the road by the sidewalk, where I think the sewer is dealt in the middle of the road. The actual parking lot, I think it's just the drainage. I could be wrong, but I'm sure that'll check, cut once. I just want, I just want it cut once.
Sure. Yep. All right, anybody else for public comment? Yeah, go ahead.
You're coming up under old business.
You're on the agenda, yep. All right, department head reports.
That's me.
Joe, it looks like it's you tonight.
Oh, so Aaron is on vacation, though I did talk to Nate, who is running the highway department. Painting downtown Fairhaven is complete. They did get some of the crosswalks done around town before that happened, and they're gonna continue with crosswalks. Those will be done before, they promised me before August, I'm sorry, before September. They've been cut and brushed. Roadside mower is on the road now, and they're gonna work hard to get that done this week. They got something, they did find something from Capital Tractor.
Oh, they, they rented one?
They did. They rented one. It's $1,600. $1,600?
For?
Oh, a week. It's a lot.
It's big, right?
It, it was a good size tractor. I think he said 90 horse.
Is it our mower? Our mower on?
Our mower.
On the tractor.
On the tractor.
Shook your head.
You know where I, and tires, I think we could run ours.
I, I do. Brush cutting, they're prepping for paving out in the, out in the village. I lost track of where I was at.
Sorry.
They're still grading. They, with all that rain, we ended up being a little potholy, so they still had to grade it out, smoothing that back. In front of you, so the, the police had kind of a busy last couple of weeks. In front of the board, I did leave the entire report. I'm gonna hit the, I'm gonna hit the highlights. Today is the chief's birthday. He turned 51, so congratulations to the chief. He made it that far. Ed Hunter's been with the, with the town for three years now as the SRO. Mr. Hoffman, he's been around for six years. Congratulations to them for making it this far as well. As you were coming in, there's a, there's an Explorer sitting out front. That's the new Explorer that the police bought. It's a 2017, 17,000 miles. Yep, and they paid $16,500 for it.
Paid how much?
$16,000.
Five?
Uh, still going with the police. We got that big grant through Homeland Security for radios, and all the radios have been installed in vehicles except that one, I believe.
It's got a radio on it?
It does. Oh, great. We did get them all. And the fingerprint machine, which is, which was also a grant, we're still waiting on that piece of equipment to come to town. This is one of those electric ones where you don't have to use the hand. And the police continue to issue junk violations at Adam Street and one at Edgewood Drive.
Questions from a citizen about PD, you know, is there anything we can do with the 911 dispatching? You know, when you call from a cell phone in Fairhaven, it usually heads over to New York State. And then they seem to be getting run around. You know, it goes from one dispatcher to the next, to the next, until it finally gets to Vermont dispatcher.
Yes.
Can we look into that to see what, are there any better ways to tackle that issue?
And more foot patrols in the park because I've been the one chasing the kids out, not any of the police the last two months.
Sorry.
And also if they continue to increase their patrols because they don't do any foot patrols downtown at all, zero, none, none. I've asked a lot of people, all the cashiers at Dunkin' Donuts and Irving's, they don't see him out there walking anywhere.
Oh, that's, find out.
So you can just have a happy birthday with that one.
Ready?
Can I ask one question about your painting?
Yep.
Is this paint the same stuff the town uses?
No, this stuff is significantly better. The stuff we use is, was cheaper.
A lot of places were most pretty, pretty thin. Some of the crosswalks doesn't look like the same as it was. I thought, since you did lease it out, saw it out, that you're gonna put the good stuff down, but I just wanna save for a couple of years. Early out, I'd rather go check it, like even the lines are loose. The line they put down the hill, it's almost left through already.
Really?
So, I mean, it's, if you pay for, it's a good paint, they should be putting it up.
Yep.
All right. Anything else for PD?
Oh, no.
No? Um, Joe, your department? Let's see here. Town manager report.
Well, it looks like there's a lot, but I'll go, I'll do as best I can. Um, so right now, I'm looking for a little guidance from the board of selectmen on this particular issue. The EDC, we, we joined, as a town, we joined the Main Street America program, and that program has a grant application open right now. And we would like to apply to Main Street America to get 10 light poles downtown as well as wireless cameras to survey that area. Like Jay and others have alluded to, there's been some vandalism, and we think cameras will, will help that problem. So if, if the board is not averse, I would like to apply for that grant. It's no match grant, $35,000 is what we're gonna ask for.
Where would the cameras go?
Up on top of the pole, not on top, but mounted to the side of the pole, facing kind of down the street so that way we can see what's going on there, and then across the street towards the bus station.
And who's gonna have access to the, who's watching the cameras? Who's pulling tapes? Who says whether Kevin gets access to the video tomorrow when his storefront is? I'm picking on you, but, sorry.
Somebody's never cheated.
But I mean, who says, you know, we don't do that or we do, and, and what is the?
Definitely need a policy.
We need a policy, right?
Well, you put it up live feed.
Sure. That'll stop people, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I talked...
If you're a great citizen, neighborhood watch, everybody can just watch it and call.
I have no idea. But I talked to the chief today, and he said from his understanding, we don't need a policy because, because the police don't tend to release that information, those videos. So he would, and the chief, only the police department would have access.
If this is a grant, call on someone to use it to get it.
The poles seem pretty easy to install. We should, if the weather's good, we should...
How long, can you, how long?
When do you know?
All the other grants, we're waiting two years, three years to get this something to hold. Is this a grant that you're gonna have to wait two years to get?
No, we can, we can start this immediately. It's not federal money. We...
When is the date that it's due and when do they award it, I guess is what?
Due date is the end of this month, August 31st. They award in September.
Oh, okay.
So you're gonna know.
Pretty fast.
Yeah, we'll know. Like, if we get it, then we can start.
I definitely agree that they should be public.
It's no match, I mean, why wouldn't we?
A lot of people have to do what's done.
And the EDC would probably wanna...
Need to study for the policy, though.
EDC would wanna write a letter of support for this grant as well.
All right, sounds good, Joe.
And I'll, I'll bring a letter of support from the board at the next meeting.
Yep, all right.
Uh, the parade committee met, I think, Monday, Monday, yesterday. There's just been no level of support for our Heroes Parade. They recommend that they're, that we just cancel that during Apple Fest. Everybody wanted a parade, nobody showed up to, to walk in the parade, so it's not looking like it's gonna happen. We are focusing on the Memorial Day Parade now. We kind of pivoted in that direction, so that way we're, we're well prepared for that. Oh, do, do, do. New phones go in on the 17th, so this is something we started with the last board. New phone system will save us about 300 bucks a month. It's huge money for just the upgrade. Brush cutting, we talked about. Line sorting, we talked about. Um, I think I mentioned this before, but I wanna mention it again. We did not receive any applications for those building communities grants. This was the grant to go to businesses. Which it's nice to take a, a year off, but it's, I was a little disappointed because I know we have a lot of businesses that could expand and that could use some money. So hopefully next year, we, we get some grants, and if you know anybody that wants some money, send it my way. The appeal for the trailer on Grape Streets moving forward, that's on Monday, the 20, I think it's the 23rd. The 23rd. Dog Park did receive its local permit. We're waiting to hear from the state, I'm sorry, yeah, the state and Army Corps about wetlands. We talked about downtown paving, waters...
Did receive their permit.
Local permit.
Local permit.
Okay, all right.
Water shut offs began today. That's why we thought we'd see some people.
Sorry to disappoint.
Yeah, no, no, it's always a pleasure. Tax sales are still moving forward. We started with six, we're down to four, and I got a promise of other payments, so, for one more, so hopefully, hopefully it's down to three. I did meet with Probate about the property on the top of Main Street, right there by the train tracks. They did appoint a guardian to the person I needed to deal with. So I've received all the signatures, and I'm moving forward with auctioning that house. It's not gonna be worth a lot, but we'll have enough to pay my hours that I have into it. As well as pay the taxes and the water, and then anything else will go to, like, the Undertaker and, I don't know, GMP. And then, between meetings, and I think everybody knows by now, but we did receive that big grant for $398,000 to replace sidewalks downtown. At the next meeting, I'll ask the board where we wanna take the money from as match. It is match of $100,000, just under $100,000. The last board approved it out of streets and sidewalks, but we would need, obviously, we'd need that again. And I hope that's all.
Any questions for Joe?
That's on your list, right? When I asked what's allocated out of the grants, you had that one allocated.
That, that was in there, yeah. It's, well, out of streets and sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that was in there.
Perfect.
Anything else?
No.
Old business, park and ride review, approval of the design. Joe, do you wanna go through that?
Sure. So the, the board met with, I think we had two public hearings, one at the Cannon and then one prior to that. The board reviewed the park and ride design. They came up with a few suggestions, which the designer took, took into account and added to the sheets we have in front of you. The changes were six handicap stalls instead of four. The cannon is not to be moved. Two mid-block crossings. There was a request for three, but if three, they considered kind of an overkill. It would've kind of mushed the crosswalks together, and we would've lost parking spaces. In discussion with local business, we met with the designer and the local business to take into their, take their concerns into account. We did remove some curbing near the Sitgo Station and added a bollard instead, so that way the, the traffic still flows well there. And the median of the rain garden on the south side was kind of, kind of angled back.
Where it wraps around?
Yeah, instead of being a squared off curb site, it just kind of curves through, which opens that gap.
What's a bollard?
Posts, metal posts, concrete posts.
Just say post.
Is that design gonna be online?
I'm sorry?
Is that design gonna be online so people can see it?
Sure, we can post it, yeah. And are the police gonna be sitting in preparking to curb the amount of drugs that are flowing into preparking on a daily basis before we do the upgrade? Because if we don't, we're just gonna give the drug dealers a nicer place to do these drugs, and I don't want your cameras to get, cameras don't hand out tickets, cameras don't get drugs out in the streets. And preparking is literally flat on feet across the road. We pay a lot of money for our police department, and this drug problem is gonna be a long time.
And he's not...
And, and part of this, we invited Mr. Trombetta and, I don't know your... Laura, to the meeting, sorry, to express their concerns and give opinions. So this is, this is your time.
Yeah, this came, today we got a letter from John, June 25th. This was all happening, and we met with him a couple of times. And as a result, curbing that was on Main Street, I don't know, but we're ready for it. We still do have some other concerns. There were several options that were shown to us, correspondence, engineer. Came to Joe, and we started looking at them sometime in July. Now, apparently, this seems to be a done deal. Again, we're grateful for the movement and curbing and innovation of it, but two concerns really are left for us. One, it seems, A, that South Park Place is not a parking lot. You know, it's, it's, it's turned up, it looks like it's just parking. And two, it's no longer, it's one-way. So we're no longer on a two-way street. Corner of the two, two, two-way streets, we're on a one-way street. We don't really feel like we've had time to discuss this with the senior engineer and find out if you have an expert looking at the traffic now, so it's concerning to us. And two, just the plan, there seems to be three choke points right in the middle. I mean, I'm sure the signs have slowed down traffic, but is the idea to even have traffic on South Park? Obviously, it's much better if our business had good traffic. I'm sorry, we own the Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts and the gas station?
And then, you know, following up on that, we just, concerns about the signage we go there. I mean, in front of our property, it's two ways. I get that. But we're just, we're just kind of... Nothing in fact is gonna happen. And we don't really feel like, you know, I don't, Joe mentioned the, meaning of the cannon or whatever, but there's three businesses on South Park. Puma Home, the church, and us. I'm not sure a church costs a business. They don't pay taxes for sure. So are we too late in the process here to have our concern heard?
There's another issue that Frank and I were discussing, because we did bring our concerns up, and we don't know if things had been heard or not, and so we came through to follow up. And there was some other decision on these designs we discussed together with Joe. And again, the valor is a much better improvement because it definitely did show our NPD, which is a gasoline distribution company. And that kind of cut our business further right there, because you're gonna get in and out of that stall. The other thing is with our Dunkin' Donuts, if this item is just one-way or a two-way in this one little section, if this property ever comes available as a commercial property, it would be ideal to tear it down and make a drive-through or something else and add to our business. But if you are only allowing one way, you've now really restricted anybody coming north and south, and you have to rely on the far west side, which is secondary to pirate roofs. So in this point, you're really devaluing our property, and we have been there. My God, Frank's father and grandfather used to be able to tell and change it. So we would like you to consider this impact of this design. You did have a larger girth between these two, and now it's cut down to about 15 feet, give or take. I don't have a real scale on me, but when you went from six bars, which I think was five feet apiece, we're down to three. So these are definitely like choke points.
It does feel like the rain garden expanded between...
Nope.
Didn't?
No.
At least on that. Maybe it just tapers now in the whole way. It's, it's a little different.
So towards the, yeah, so, so towards the, towards Main Street, they added that extra crosswalk at the, at the request. So it, it does look like it expands a little bit right there to accommodate that, that crossing.
Is there any way, Joe, to make that last third of that area a two-way?
The last?
The last third.
No, this is two-way.
It is a two-way.
Yeah, in front of the gas station.
Yeah, but it's, it's tight, though, with the, because your parking spots are going the wrong way. They're not gonna get traffic.
Well, it's designed to turn into the store, not into a parking lot.
It's not intended to let...
It's not intended to, I can tell you that, I hear what you're saying. My concern from a safety standpoint are people are going to be coming in that small concession we made on two-way, and they're just going to blow right straight through the wrong way on a one-way. That we allow any two-way that's sitting there. But I think it's a good, but I think it's a, by looking at your business and saying, that's a reasonable, just like trying to take some curbing out, that's a reasonable accommodation to have two-way so that people can get in and out there. I just think we're going to have to be conscious about, do not enter.
That crosswalk's going to be well signed. I don't think there'll be any problem, I mean, other than the blatant disregard. Think there'll be a lot of, oh, I didn't see that.
See, that would come down to science too, because people are discouraged from coming in at all.
But, but- I mean, now we have, in the middle, we have, let's say a north and south parking where people kind of go, we're kind of creating another yard of parking stalls. I mean, if I take a quick look, it looks like it's more than double the current capacity. So I hear what you're saying, and safety, and it's been like that for years, and I don't know if there's been a casualty or-
It's not double though, it's about the same.
It's about the same number, same number.
Exactly the same, we're only marked right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
For example, I know we're about a small plant, you can't see the traffic stalls opposite of us, they're now angled that way. We're for this design, okay? This is really a plus for the time, I think. If you're pulling in, you're going to look at those parking spots, I figure.
You're going to want to go the other way.
You're going to say, I'm not supposed to go in.
It's a deterrent.
Yeah, that's definitely an awkward situation right there, if anything, that should be-
Again, the other way, if you're coming, it's correct. So I don't think you can have it both ways, is my point. And if it's just a one-way, then you really could sacrifice that sense.
Gasoline stations, I'll use, it's spontaneous, right? It's hard to get in or mentally, it's quick. It's crowded, right? This is a small station to begin with, you don't want that.
Right.
Understood.
Those impacts are really hard to judge, and we're going to have business.
So what are you proposing?
I wish you could put it, I wish you could do parking straight in and have that portion of self-park place be too good traffic as it is now.
Couldn't we narrow up the rain garden a little bit to accommodate the straight-in parking in that spot?
On that side?
Just in that last third?
Well, in this first section here, as you turn in, you've got close spaces right here in front of Dunkin' Donuts. There's close spaces.
We move this, well, right here.
There's close spaces.
You're tight by the diagonals, right?
Yeah, the diagonals, the close spaces. You take this crosswalk, do this forward, put it in the middle of that, call it six. Put it as a triangle, you can kick the first three or the first six out towards North Main. That way it's angled, that way it looks like it's coming in.
You lost him.
Guy got interrupted and never got-
Yeah, so you put a triangle on here.
I did, yeah, I screwed that up, I'm sorry.
That's terrible, throwing my shoe at you.
You can.
But the only problem in a sentence is my partner, like, running apart and leaving.
Well, you already got that now because of the tenants that were living there anyway, so most first spots are going to block in.
I apologize, I kind of cut you off, so continue.
No, no, go ahead, continue, I mean.
Who is speaking, your or?
Jonathan was you or Jeff was?
No, no, again, my choice would be, and I know there's four or five plans here, at least one of them had the parking straight in. And I don't think it would take too much to make that portion of self-park to a trap. I don't think it would hurt you that much, and the other side could be one-way, that wouldn't affect our business at all. But at this point, I can't sit here and say that it's not going to act as negative. Kick it around all night, but that's our fear. And if it's not, if it's dual, then we'd like to now reconsider.
I mean, it is technically a road, and that's Frank had moved before, and it's now being designed as a parking, more so towards a parking.
I don't want to insult the designer, it's just me like, I'm just-
It just looks more like a-
Glenn, go ahead.
Well, I heard something from Jeff and I wanted to ask, when you look at the design we have in front of us, if the rain garden right across from where you have the diagonal parking places, if those diagonal were straight in, and we took the rain garden and made it a little smaller so that people could come in and go straight in, would that help your parking and better?
I don't think, I don't think there is problems with parking.
It's traffic flow.
It's traffic flow itself?
That's what I'm hearing, right?
We rely on customers to come into our business, and when it's restricted like that, we now are losing probably a third to a half of those traffic.
Joe, was there a plan that had this in reverse?
Yeah.
Where all the spots were angled the opposite direction? So traffic in would be on their side, traffic out would be up by the Cannon?
Yes, we could do that.
We did have a version like that, didn't we?
That-
That would get traffic in.
That would bring every vehicle that went down there by your parking.
Although to, to, sorry Laura, to Laura's point, making that two-way in the design that you have, making that two-way wouldn't have any impact on your business. Traffic is coming from West Park towards your business. So you're not, if you make it a two-way street, business is still coming in your direction, the way it's designed now. If anything, if we turn it around, business will go past your business. Everything now is pointed right at the Dunkin' Donuts.
I'm seeing two-way on less than a third of this room, then it's one-way coming from the west in. Is that the same design yet?
Yes.
Okay. Because what we're asking is keep it two-way in and out, and just reset this part. If the angles are, like this gentleman said, triangular, bump out is a better.
That way it kicks that first end.
We have a two-way and a single.
Pointing towards the North Main.
That was kind of my question though, if it was in the reverse, so the traffic's coming one-way in right by your store, and then exiting out up by the Cannon?
You mean coming from the west, going east?
East to west instead.
Rather than, we'll go from west to east, to west.
Just totally-
We just spent some time last time, we were just driving around about 10 times.
Yeah.
And we determined if it had to be one-way, the way you guys have done it is better.
Oh.
I think so, yeah. That's the way I usually stop when I stop at the store.
I don't even know if I'm operating, so why I thought that at the time, just seeing cars coming in and pulling on the right.
Yeah.
But again, what we'd rather see is have it, I know there's a plan for the parking structure like that, to have it be two-way. I did have a conversation with Mr. President on the phone on Friday. He said it was run here to certain effects, but he did say none of that two-way traffic. I guess that's our request.
The only thing I can see is where is your Dunkin' Donuts truck going to park and deliver? Just out of curiosity, because I know they love parking areas out of the way, they can just scoot across and see them all the time.
Yeah, right now they park kind of way.
Yeah, they park right in front of Christian Mission's place.
Yeah, because it's a tractor-trailer.
Yeah.
And they come-
This has been designed not to accommodate any part of that.
Yeah, he's not going to be able to come in and do that.
He shouldn't work anywhere in there, he parks here, he's going to block.
He's been there for a truck though, right? He did make it so that a truck can make the one-way.
Not around the corner. So, I mean, what's the boards', what do you guys want to do? Do you want to continue looking at it? I mean, get some more options? Continue with what's been presented by Joe?
There's a, I, I think there's a reason we went diagonal, because we couldn't get bigger vehicles that we're talking about, full-size trucks and everything versus straight-in parking. Well, it wasn't wide enough, so changing-
Well, it's the turning radius on the vehicles.
For trying to get them in, so. I'm, I'm looking at this and I, it met most, from the last time we got together. It met the criteria that I saw. I'm sensitive to, we've got an 18-wheeler coming in, it's probably going to have to come in from the west side of the park. Because they can't turn, because we didn't, because the cannon isn't moving, you can't get an 18-wheeler to take a left turn to come in and even do the one-way around anyway. I think the 18-wheeler's got to come in up on this other end, the west side of the park, come down, take the one-way, and that 18-wheeler's going to be pulling and parking right in, dropping either right in the road or right in the park. I understand, I don't have an answer, but where your delivery truck is almost going to-
Well, you said last time that you didn't want any 18-wheelers down there in any part of this design, and you don't think that any 18-wheeler should be in pre-parking?
But if you're, but if that's what's bringing-
That's what you said.
And also.
But if that's bringing-
They come in the other way, they're heading this way.
They come in between.
Because the only other alternative, again, I look at 18-wheelers in the city, they pull right up and they stop right there on the side of the street and unload.
Well, now what street are you going to be on? Are you going to be in Carl Durpys, where they park, or are you going to be parking, where are they going to park?
Or they're going to deliver in the half-hours when it's not busy. But I, but if you ask, what do I support right here? I'm not, I don't want to go back and rehash everything all over again. I look at, what the people who did the design came back. They did the changes that we asked for, tried to do some and weren't able to do it. I'm, I'm happy with what I'm looking at.
Well, is there a way that we could ask the engineers, I don't want to start all over again either, but a minimum change of maybe narrowing down the rain garden at that end, that we could then have straight-in parking for that short area without having to start all over again, modify that part?
Yes, that looks like that's possible.
All right, well, let's-
I can have a design drawn up.
That's the extent of change, and I would support that change for that small area up there.
Yeah, that's what they're looking for.
Well, no, they want two-way all the way down through there, and I'm saying, no, I don't support two-way all the way down through there. That's just me.
Others?
I don't have any, I don't have any problem asking, you know, running by the engineer and seeing if, but I think with that cannon not moving.
Exactly.
Where's the can?
It's a stone pedestal that's set down there.
Uh, it's-
Almost middle of the page.
By the second crosswalk on the-
Oh, that's on the other side.
Yeah.
But what it does is it limit, it holds-
Pushes everything down.
Your north side of the road.
Oh.
So what we can't do is push over that 10 more feet.
We can't, we can't move like the original we're going to do.
That's what, the original plan was to shove it over. 10 feet. Uh, let's see. So you spoke with Joe and the engineer at the same time or no?
We actually came to see Joe over a month, I guess, because that's meant recurring to our concern. And we never heard back on what was transpired. So we came back again and inquired, and we found that this was pretty much a done deal. So at that point, we were very upset because we felt we hadn't heard, that could have saved all of us a big time and dollars. So that's why we're here today, to present ourselves. And if it was different, we would be in this situation.
So, the engineer has heard their concerns. Have you talked to the engineer about?
Yes.
Is there, is there, is there a compromise?
This is a compromise right there.
This is the compromise.
This is the compromise.
Except this was the compromise before we talked with them.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I didn't know the engineer had any other, you know, one, I mean, we've been years doing this. One more, two weeks is really going to kill me.
Two weeks isn't going to kill me. I don't want to be next to you this time, sitting here, talking about the same stuff again.
Agreed. But I mean, I don't think it would hurt to-
So what's the offense?
Share their concerns.
It was my understanding that the concerns that had already been shared?
I'm sorry?
Were the concerns that we heard tonight already been shared with you and the engineer?
So, there's a, with me and-
Our engineer, DeBois and King?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm making the assumption, DeBois and King and you have been having conversations, that's why I'm a little surprised that I'm sitting here having this conversation.
But I'm not hearing that from over here.
Right, but that's why I'm asking, Joe.
So, our timelines might be a little off. What happened was, in terms of timelines, we sent a letter out about the original public hearing to all the businesses downtown that were going to be impacted, including West Park. We had that hearing. We also had another hearing about the Cannon, which was also advertised. After that, I did talk to Laura and Mr. Trombetta, which was after those hearings. So this is actually the first time we've sat down and talked about this plan since the original two public hearings. So no, you haven't heard about this because we haven't talked about this.
And the engineer-
This is the first time we've discussed this since the public hearings.
And the engineer hasn't had a chance to take their input into account in this plan?
No, in fact. What happened was-
Can we just give the engineer a little bit of time to-
As a special consideration to the gas station, we invited them to come and sit down on a Zoom meeting with the engineer, so that way we could talk about the concerns. This meeting is now a hashing out of that. Is that about right?
It's about right, it's enough. I just wanted to meet you, all right? We have a similar situation. There's a bridge project, AOT is doing that. So we got a phone call, and we got emails, and we'd like to meet with you at your business on July 18th. I called the guy out, and he's like, well, he said, when are you going to do it? 2024, 2025. So they've got the plan, what do they know, are they going to have it, are they going to do it over two seasons, one season, or whatever? They have a lot of time to plan. What I have, I think Joe's been responsive, because Martin King's already made one change that we asked for, okay? But what I have a problem here is, we need time to think about this. I've said several times tonight, I'm really concerned about the loss of two-way traffic on that street. I don't, I can't sit here with a straight face and say, this is my business. But we need time to think about this, so why won't we? We're the only impacting business that I know of that's here. I feel like we should have had one of those.
Okay, it's fair enough, fair enough. So what we're talking is, we're going to take what we've heard tonight about trying to make that, what that would do, to go two-way? Is that what you're-
Is it possible to fit it? I guess that's the question.
It is.
It is?
Yeah, we can make that two-way. The board, you guys can do whatever you want.
It doesn't look to me like there's physically enough room for-
When I look at the sketches.
In this drawing, to just shift things around, it doesn't look like there's enough room for it.
We can redesign it to fit two-way traffic on the bottom and one-way on the top.
I'd like a suggestion. These plans, I did speak with Mr. President, it's not, I'm not sure you're concerned about the loss the last time. We would be willing at our expense to modify, and if you give us a plan, does it work, and if it does, which you probably try to make. The only difference would be, try to, it's two ways.
Two ways.
It's two ways, I mean, and if you can't do it, you can't do it. Can I be done with that, should you consider?
Fair enough, fair enough.
I would think he, he could give us an idea whether it was worth even drawing up a new set of plans without a lot of cost.
Yeah, these are, we do this all the time.
Right.
It's like the site plans or whatever, I know you've got four or five options, but these are not architectural design plans, these are just-
Right.
These are just-
So this is, I'm expecting this to process around five minutes.
Yeah.
It's reasonable, I'm okay with that.
Other board members, where are you? I mean, is anybody hard and fast? No two-way? I mean, I don't want to waste their time and Joe's time if the board's ultimately going to decide with what we have here.
Well, I have a hard time taking their money for it. I mean, we didn't take the guys that told us to not move the Cannon when we redesigned, so I'm having a hard time So I, I'm having a hard time hitting one business for it, but that's just me. And I, I think we should be cognizant of the concerns of a functional business in Fairhaven.
So I think the two options are on...
There was a lot of time that this was out there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there were public notices about it significantly earlier than now. But I, at the same time, I think your concerns are very valid and we should...
Can I ask when they came out?
Joe, when?
It's been, this has been in the making for years.
Of two years?
And we've, we've been...
The public hearings.
Oh, the public... I don't know the dates, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry.
Was it two months, May?
Yeah.
May?
So I think the direction, the direction for the town manager, I think from what I'm hearing, so we can kind of move on, wrap this up for tonight, is we'd like to see an option, what it would look like for two-way traffic through the whole area. And also, is there a, is there a way to push back and make those stalls straight on instead of angled in the last, in front of their business on the, in the parking lot side? That's the two options I'm hearing we want some feedback on, if there's others.
What I heard is if it's, if it's not a loop, it needs to be enticing for traffic to pull in. Can't be any, correct, this is what I'm hearing. As far as a business perspective, it can't be...
Restricted.
Restricted.
Yep.
It can't, it can't just have a sign that says it's a two-way street and then look for...
Yeah, it's gotta be designed right, but that's...
I'd go on down a one-way street.
Alright, go ahead to recap.
Well, yeah, yeah, but just to be, just to be clear, um, it's, if it's a two-way on the south side, it's not gonna be angled parking, because then it would be just, it would just, it would be straight in. So just to keep, so everybody is cognizant of that. So what I'm, so what I'm gonna get is the south side going two directions, um, straight in parking.
Could be angled with the way of the...
Going both ways.
Right? It's could be angled to your side of the room.
Oh, one, one-way, one-way.
Right and...
Well, I think that's why we have an engineer for him to do this work for us, not us.
Agreed.
So I, I think Joe's got his direction from the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, have them work on those two options and bring it back as soon as possible and let...
And we'll look and see what's...
Yep.
Yes.
And if we need a, what, breakout with you and then bring it back.
I'll, uh...
Make sure they know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when I get a new design, I'll forward it to you so we can talk about it and then you can...
Yeah, well, we, Joe, I'm going away on vacation on Thursday, around tomorrow, Thursday. We should coordinate what we're gonna ask, um, Mr. President for it.
Alright.
I mean, absolutely, I wanna, want you to leave this meeting knowing we're, we want to do what's best for your business and not hurt your business, even though it sounds like we're, we're talking money and everything else. Believe me, uh, we don't want to do anything that, that would hurt business and cause...
I mean, the ultimate goal of this project is to bring more business downtown.
Exactly, is to help our downtown.
It's to redevelop downtown, so...
It was to, it was to get the economy rolling even better and bring more customers to your store.
I think it will, I mean, branding's gonna do the same thing, we got a lot of concern about theirs, got a lot of time for their job.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it. Uh, new business, twenty-minute parking request for North Park Place.
Can you run your plan?
We should... Can we notice, Joe? Can we get a plan? Can you have the engineers put down the length of the parking spots?
Yeah. What's the measurement on?
Because it's not on here, it's, it's hard to imagine. Because one of the reasons that we went away from the straight-ons was because, uh, uh...
We didn't think we could fit.
It's the truck, it was sixteen feet long or something like that.
Yep.
And no truck is sixteen feet long. About a little Maverick, Ford Maverick might be.
I think that they'll be able to do what's requested, we might end up losing parking spots with the additional, with the additional crosswalks, turning across, turning. But I'll bring something, we'll, we'll get a couple.
I'm okay with, you know, have them drawing, just one little piece of information with the length of the...
Yep.
Uh, you know, there's two different lengths, one for diagonals and one for straight-ons.
Just in the key over here.
Yeah, in the key, what the length of the parking spots are.
And where.
Alright, uh, North Park Place request, Joe?
Yes. So, um, in your packet, you have a, a aerial of the North Park Place. The big white house there, number one, um, is having a lot of difficulty with, uh, school, with folks that work at the school parking very close to his driveway. Um, he's having a hard time turning in and then pulling out of that location. He's requested to have, uh, twenty-minute parking along that whole portion of North Park Place. And, and to add, I did have a, a fireman stop in today and tell me, he says, sometimes there is so much school traffic in front of, um, on North Park and then even out here at our angle parking that when fire trucks come, when firefighters come to respond to fires, they can't find a spot to park be, because of the amount of school traffic that parks here.
Is the parking, parents picking up their children at the end of the day? Or is the parking issue people parking all day long with teachers? And...
Is that probably a little both?
A little, a little, probably some of both, but I, I believe the ones picking up the kids, they don't need a twenty-minute parking because they're not gonna probably be there much more than twenty minutes.
Yep.
Um...
People park all in there for church on Sunday as well, so...
Right, in twenty...
I don't, twenty minutes, I'd rather have it say no parking than twenty minutes.
Well, and with me, my, my question would be, if the, if the problem that we want twenty-minute parking is because we have teachers parking all day long here and taking spaces up here, have we, is the answer not making another parking and another ordinance, but go talk to the school board to say, you, what's the reason? Because there may be a very good reason why the teachers aren't parking behind the school. And if it's because the buses and everything and with COVID is going on, there's, there's not enough parking spaces, that's one thing. But, uh, I, I hate to put, uh, a rule of twenty-minute parking because our, our real problem is teachers are, are parking out on the street when they should be parking, uh, on school property behind the school.
Can't we just do no parking around his driveway so that he can get in and out? I mean, it seems to go without saying.
But they're also talking about the, uh, the fire department.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And also the cars that are parked there all day long, they're trying to sneak out, make your turn, see around the cars. It's, uh, I can understand why we got the question.
But the twenty-minute isn't gonna solve that problem. You're still gonna have a car there.
Right.
So I, you're still gonna have to come around a car. It's just gonna only be there for twenty minutes.
That's...
And I've never waited in my driveway for twenty minutes to leave.
Right. No, I agree.
Let's face it, the, the police are not gonna be, the, we don't have parking meter maids or anything.
Right.
So, so make it no parking, just like we did?
I, I think it might be a combination. I mean, twenty minutes, at least it sets people...
Because these are, that's no parking right there. If you just hash that.
It'd be from the corner, why don't you go from the corner to the west side of his driveway? Twenty feet beyond his driveway.
Yeah.
Because then you'd have visibility both ways.
Well, that's existing, you know?
That's existing?
If the marks are right on the road, that's existing. It would just be carrying it around the corner to make that sight line around the corner.
I'm thinking no parking from like here to here.
Yeah, that, I would agree, because that makes that sight line around that corner better.
It doesn't have to be the whole thing.
It doesn't have to be, just like twenty feet on this side to the corner.
Yep, that you, you're talking like this. You could still...
You got any thoughts on that, Joe? You've talked to him, I haven't talked to him.
Glenn's got it on his map.
Yeah, um, actually Glenn made a good point, I didn't think about it, but it, it, to keep making it no parking, no parking from the school and just bumping it out in this big circle of no parking, what's gonna happen here is they're just gonna move into parking in front of town.
Just gonna move farther.
And then when they can't park in angle parking, they'll move into the parking lot.
Agreed. I was more thinking about it from the idea of like subtle line of sight.
Yeah.
That even twenty-minute parking might not, shouldn't probably be there.
Maybe if the board doesn't mind, I can talk to the school first. Because I, I, I have to agree, just legislating to stop something like this seems like it's just pushing the problem down, further down the road.
Talking with their neighbors or something.
Is that okay?
Okay, but you can't, you can't stop rudeness.
Correct.
I mean, it's, it's rude...
To block the guy's driveway.
To block the guy's driveway. Okay, and you just can't, you're not gonna stop that, no matter what the parking, uh, reason is. So, I mean, you, you gotta do the right thing for that person. He's, he's a taxpayer, he should be able to, uh, pull out of his driveway.
Sure.
So even if you made a hashed no parking...
Hashed out.
You know, uh, it's just, you know, like, as if it's in front of a, um, fire hydrant or something like that. Just a hash mark on the road for fifteen, twenty feet on that east side of, of his driveway.
I mean, sometimes we have the unintended consequences of a decision we make here, like if we put too much no parking in, we'll be, we'll be having the people from Dollar General in here complaining that our taxpayers are taking up their parking spaces, all, all picking up and dropping out their children or taking customer's spaces.
I can, I could rewrite, uh, I could rewrite the ordinance and bring a copy at the next meeting and then at the same time in the next two weeks, talk to the school. And if they're amenable, maybe the board can...
It's gonna take a long, quite a while to do ordinance anyway.
Right.
So at least a thirty-day, forty-day?
It is.
Forty-five.
And, and thirty days after that, where if a conversation with, with the school, so, uh, that our principal of Fairhaven Grace School talks with their teachers to say, hey, look, is there a reason why we can't have there all of our teachers parking behind the school instead of out here all day in these spaces?
Alright.
So I'll draft, I'll draft a policy, but also talk to the school.
Do you have a sense of the number of parking spots behind the school and how many teachers there are?
There's probably room. I mean, the parking lot itself is full, but I think down, further down, there's probably potential for parking there.
Side of, the side of the street, that type, okay. So it may just be hashing parking spot, parking...
Somewhere down there. But even that mental, I, even that corner, to hash that out, I mean, that does make the sight lines much easier to navigate than having, than having cars there.
That resident should be able to get in and out of his house safely.
Yes.
No question.
Alright, so Joe will bring some options back. Um, appointment to the planning commission.
There's actually two, uh, two things with this. Um, the, the first, uh, Ms. Fallon has requested to be on the planning commission. But today at, at three forty, I'm sorry? Well, there were seven and then we lost a bunch of members, so we reduced it down to five. Um, so, but, uh, Mr. Wells, uh, submitted his resignation today, so you only have four planning commission members as of today.
So, so by, by, we're back to five, we don't...
Yeah, Mr. Wells, he, if I, he, he wrote...
That's what I'm trying to figure out, no. Was Kevin here for this?
No, he, he was here to talk to Frank.
Oh, okay.
Which, which Wells is this?
Bill. Yep. Uh, so, so Mr. Wells, he, uh, he wrote, um, he says he sold his home here in Fairhaven and he's relocating to South Carolina. Uh, he wanted to let the board of selectmen in the town know that he's, uh, he's very grateful to have been able to serve, uh, serve the town in its capacity for the last three years, uh, and have such a great contribution to the town. And he thanked, he thanks the board for accepting it.
Need a motion to accept him?
I'll make a motion to appoint Deborah Fallon.
Accept his resignation.
A resignation?
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the resignation with regret for, uh, William Wells, uh, from the planning commission.
Alright, is there a second?
Second, okay, we appreciate the service.
Yeah.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. And then we don't need to raise it to six or seven, so is there a motion for the appointment?
Now I'll make the motion to appoint Deborah Fallon to the planning commission.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff. Any questions? Any questions from Deb?
I would say, should we advertise it, but I know we wouldn't get any applicants, so, and you're here.
And I think, and I think the minutes from our last meeting when we said, hey, we're looking for people all the time for planning and signing...
I heard, I heard that there were vacancies at the last meeting and, um, because I didn't thank you...
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
That motion carries, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Uh, water abatement.
Water, present the abatement? Yes.
Payment request.
Oh, I'm gonna butcher this name, I apologize, um, I'm sorry.
It's about a thousand unnamed tonight.
I'm, I...
Kanye?
Kanye? Uh, so Ms. Kanye from Three Grove Street, um, uh, has requested the board to abate uh, some of her water bill. Um, she'd like to have her water bill be reduced to the average of what it has been in the past. Ms. Kanye, if, uh, on the, on the picture in front of you, Ms. Kanye owns Three Grove, which has the unusual distinction of having a, the unusual distinction of having a meter closer to, um, Four A Prospect and then a, a long feeder line running to her house. That line broke back in, I think it was Nov, back in November of twenty twenty, or started to leak in November of twenty twenty, uh, continued to leak slowly until April first, where it finally burst. And then they fixed it sometime, uh, early May. So, well, mid-March it burst, early May it was fixed, which led to the six thousand and change, um, water, water bill.
Now, if we tell people, if we monitor for them and we tell them, and this went on from November and then really got bad in, in April, how can they say they did not know they had a leak?
I asked Ms. Kanye and she said that she never got the letters. We don't send them certified, but...
But you send them the same place the water bill goes, right?
Yep, water bill got there.
I thought we called them. No?
No, we, we send letters.
At the house?
Yeah, it is. And the, the meter is, is down...
The meter is down here?
It's about five hundred, five hundred yards. Yeah, we've gotten good response from them. Yeah.
And, and the water is still leaking today?
They said, uh, I talked to the young couple yes, yesterday, and they said they fixed a leak, but, uh, according to our readings, it hasn't been fixed, it's still got, uh, some kind of drip to it. They, they'll be getting a letter, uh, I, I talked to the front office today, they'll be getting a letter either tomorrow or the next day. They were pulling that information now.
Alright, is there, uh, any action from the board or not on this request?
So how many letters were sent identifying that they had a problem?
We, so we were sending them every week and we reduced it down to, um, about once a month, if it's just a general drip. So they received maybe six, six letters?
They didn't get, they said they didn't get a letter, but we, we sent six.
Yeah, and two of the letters, um, when talking with the front office, two of the letters were actually put into the water bill.
Yeah, but that's, they know they got a leak now. They look at the water bill.
But usually when we have an abatement request, they come and sit here and, instead of asking you the, the question, I can, I can look at the person and ask them some of the questions like, uh, uh, has this, the six thousand dollars, is that just one period, one bill? Have they not paid their water bill for multiple...
No, this is, this is, yeah, this is overtime.
Okay, this is overtime and what they're saying is they're paid up to date, but they had like six thousand dollars back for overpayment?
Yeah, no, no, uh...
See, I'm trying to understand.
This is six thousand dollars starting back in, sorry, clarify on this game.
Last fall?
Yeah, starting back in March.
So it's...
Well, you're...
Two...
In November, right?
Right, that's, that was last.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's when the big, so the big spike hit in March, all the way through May. That, that's the big hit right there, but it's been dripping for months.
Uh, what's their, um, best case resolution? What are they asking for?
They want the, they want the average of whatever was prior. It's been over the last four years.
Which would be an abatement of how much, if we did that?
I don't have it in front of me.
How long have they lived there?
They just moved in. I think it's been two years.
Oh, so they're new owners.
Relatively.
Rel- relatively.
Yes.
And we made a decision on the Green Mountain Manor when they came in and said, hey, we, about, they were looking for an abatement over a period of time.
Yep.
Similar to this, that we didn't allow.
This, this case is pretty, I mean, not that it's a transit, a trailer station, but this, this case is similar because Green Mountain's, um, meter is way back, and there's one big feeder line running up the middle of the park, and that line did break for Green Mountain way up, which is similar to this. It, it burst and nobody, nobody took care of it.
And we can't just abate a sewer portion. They, they have septic, right? There's no sewer in this bill.
Yep, they're on septic, so they don't have a sewer portion.
Usually that would be my go-to.
Right.
That you could knock it down some, but without that.
But is, my, my only question would be, so have we fixed the problem, so they're not gonna be, because if the problem's not fixed, we're, they're gonna.
Be back here.
Back with another six thousand dollars, uh, what's, or what's?
So, uh, again, I, I talked with the, with the couple yesterday. They say they can't permanently fix the line, because the line passes through their neighbor's property. That neighbor will not give them easement to dig.
You can.
Won't do that. They don't have an easement?
That's what they told me.
They don't have an easement for that water line?
That's what they told me. There was no easement on that property. They, they've met with a lawyer, um, to try to fix that, which is not our problem, obviously, but, um, trying to figure out what they could do. Um, yeah, they met with a lawyer and couldn't, they really don't have any movement on that.
Put it right down the driveway, maybe?
I think it's on the edge of a property. I don't think it's down the driveway.
Well, but they could go down the center of the driveway.
Oh, yeah, they could.
Property's not them, though. It's expensive.
So I mean, all indication seems that they are using, there is a leak, and it's on the other side of the meter.
It is. Um, what is possible to kind of ease a burden if the board was inclined was we could do a, um, a payment agreement. Our, our agreements are only supposed to be for four, six months. If the board wanted to do a little longer to kind of ease the pain, uh, it's contrary to policy, but it's something, I guess. Um, if not, we could do six months, which is in policy.
I, I'd find, stretch into a year, probably. It's, it's a big bill.
But is it gonna help the situation, because they can't fix it? Can't fix the leak, it sounds like.
Permanently, it's a struggle.
I, yeah, I don't know what to do about that.
I mean, so it's gonna be a big bill continuing. Till the leak's fixed.
Right, I see.
Do you want a table and see if they'll come in and see us in two weeks? I, it doesn't, maybe. Other than hearing what their plan is moving forward, I don't see a lot of way going on the bill for an abatement.
Right.
I mean, I have sympathy or empathy for the, them, because they are, they just bought the property recently.
Yep.
And obviously, they, they didn't understand the, the implications of this. Uh, I mean, I personally would have no problem, you know, giving them an, an abatement, if they use that money to go, to, to put it, put another pipe in. Okay, otherwise, you know, this is going to, it's gonna, it's going to continue and, you know, basically say, look, if you, if you want a, an abatement, you have to, uh, you know, have a, provide a guarantee that this isn't gonna happen again. It's not helping the town to continue to have a leak. Okay, um, although it's probably cleaning up their, uh, delivery of water.
Yeah, flushing the lines on that side.
How do you look at the next guy whose toilet runs off with a straight face and say, no, I'm not abating yours?
We're not talking about a toilet here. We're talking about a, a right-of-way issue.
Yeah, it's a different, totally different issue.
Uh, that, and he's got five hundred feet of, I mean.
No, no, I, I understand the.
But I get to Jeff's point. He's the next guy to go, want a new toilet.
I, I understand.
Right, he's gonna at least say, I want my new toilet out of that, right?
Gonna say, what?
He could at least say, you, you did a service line, you basically paid for the service line for these guys out of the abatement, so, with the abatement. So you can abate enough to pay for my new toilet out of mine.
I'm not, I'm not saying to, to pay, to give them a, a full abatement. I'm just saying, we, we could give an abatement, if, if they're not willing to do anything, then, uh, the, the abatement is off the table, from my standpoint. Okay, but if they're, if they're willing to come up with a real solution, because from the sounds of it, it's, it's just, they're gonna have, uh, you know, I read a note here that it's constantly in need of, uh, repair.
Let, let's send Joe back with those options.
Well, I think we need to have, I think they need to come to the meeting in two weeks.
I'd wanna talk, before I would even consider abating anything. I want, I want them sitting here, explaining and answering some, some questions.
Rock can ask them those questions, you can ask, so we're requesting their, be here at the next meeting?
Because our policy, if I just look at what our policy is, and what we can do for, um,
There's not much.
There's not much we can do. So, and, and I think the only way we can fairly treat everybody who comes in here is don't waver too far from what your.
Policy.
Policy says, and we'll be, and pretty good.
With the exception of a little time.
Right, I, when you're saying that because it's six thousand dollars, I get it.
So Joe, can you invite them to the next, next meeting? Alright, thank you. Uh, the next one was the water, uh, payment agreement request.
Uh, water payment agreement. Uh, gentleman, uh, I'm Conervin Striven, Conervin. Currently owes eleven, almost twelve hundred dollars, uh, in water to the town. Uh, he requested a payment agreement. The young man had a payment agreement, uh, last October. We're only, the policy only allows payment agreements once every twelve months. So he's still within that twelve-month time period, so we could not offer him an agreement. Uh, he said he was coming in tonight, but he's not here.
Uh, what is his positive resolution?
Uh, when, when speaking with the young man, uh, he said he would do his best to make payments, and that he was going to, um, file for his last two years' tax return, so that way he could pay this off.
And couldn't both of these families apply for that, um, the Vermont aid to cover these bills?
Uh, yes, the town has reached out to, uh, a lot of delinquent taxpayer, uh, delinquent water payers. Uh, I don't know if these two were contact, were contacted, but yes, they can.
I know, um, like CB, GM, GMP is going as far as, has a person helping fill out paperwork. If, if he's only in support, maybe we could offer some.
We're, so we, yeah, we do. We, we, we've actually picked up the phone. I personally have picked up the phone and called people, um, letting them know. So it, it's not an unknown thing here in town.
So what would the new paym-, again, this is tough without him being here, but what would the new payment plan be that would work for him?
Uh, so the, um, staying within policy, it would be twelve hundred dollars divided by six. Was that five hundred dollars a month? Did I do that math wrong?
Divided by six, it'd be two.
Two hundred. Oh, two hundred. So two hundred dollars a month, staying on top of current water bills.
And this person is, on their current payment agreement, they're up to date with their payments?
No, no, that's the problem.
No, no, he, he had a payment agreement.
He did not, but he paid it off.
But you can't do another one.
That's within twelve months.
He had one, see, that's what I was trying to, I was trying to find out if I had someone who, whether, whether, if I gave him an agreement, whether.
What'd he do?
They were, they lived with him.
And they did.
And they did, it sounds like.
So they fell behind, um.
And they, they just don't fall within that one year until October, and.
So I guess what I was, what I was saying is, we could authorize Joe to do another payment agreement for a certain amount of time.
Well, I, I, I come back to what we say, here are the rules. Here are the rules, follow the rules. And I, I feel, no, no, but I, I feel more comfortable if we said, we can't entertain a payment agreement until October. And at that time, the twelve hundred may be greater. I'm not saying turn off their, their water. I'm saying, uh, uh.
That's why we're here.
Their water would have to be turned off.
Their, their water is turned off until October?
That, I think that's why we're here, right? Because they hit the wall on water. Right, you're, you're about to do a shut-off.
This is water sewer.
What's your recommendation?
Good question.
So, so I, I, I don't recommend abating or, um, extending another agreement. I know that sounds harsh and callous, um, but I've, I've been here for, uh, going on four years, and I find that as we, as, when I say we, I mean the Board of Selectmen, as we, we abate, and we extend, and we do this, and we do that, the next person comes in and says, and then the next person. Uh, the young lady with the big water bill came in and said, I hear you guys do this all the time. It's like, no, no, we don't. So, from, from, from a professional standpoint, by abating and by giving this other gentleman another agreement, it will cause further hardship for the town in two weeks. It, this won't be the last time this board sees something like this, and it will be much worse in the future. Yep. In the near future, it will be much worse, because we have to be fair. It's hard. But sometimes.
So I think the option is to see if Joe can work with them with the COVID relief.
To see if we can get some relief funds to pay.
And obviously, if you're working on that, you can, is that in your purview to?
Not shut off.
Not shut off the water while you're working for that grant fund?
No.
No, it would, to follow policy, who'd have to be turned off?
You gonna make a move?
No, he'll find the money. And to be honest, with the tax sales and with the water, the money always shows up. It sounds harsh and callous, but at the end of the day, it's just, it's, you need water to live.
Do we give them the same opportu-, I said, I wanna make sure I'm consistent. Do we give them the same opportunity as we do the people on Grove Street? To say, come in, if there's, if there's something you feel.
That we miss.
Quite, quite frankly, having, uh, asking for an abatement and not coming in, uh, there may be a very good reason, but I think we should give them the same option.
Young kids that he's put in the bed.
Right.
Could be. I don't know what the.
And he probably doesn't wanna pay extra money for daycare while, for childcare while he can't pay his water bill.
I understand.
Alright, so we'll.
I'm putting words in there.
No, no, I, I, but I, I, I don't wanna sound like Joe on this, but I come back and I think, my answer would still be no. You're not, you're not, you're not living, you're not living to.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Every, every, everyone should be.
Joe, just reach out to these, both of these people and see if you can, well, reach out to any delin-, any of the.
Anyone that's delinquent and.
And tell them that there's this pot of money.
Sitting out there, and you should be.
I mean, I, I almost send a notice around that says, this is how you go, go get this. To those accounts.
But, but at the end of the day, we can't sit there and make someone.
No.
File for that money.
I can't.
And, and we shouldn't.
I just wanted to give them every opportunity.
Yep.
So is that clear, Joe, or not?
Clear.
You, you want me to leave everybody's water on and have them come to the next meeting?
No.
No, we didn't say that. We didn't say that.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I misunderstood then. What, what is, what is my directives?
When is the water shut off?
Started today.
They both are shut off today.
Both, oh, no, no, both will, both will be shut off tomorrow, depending on this meeting.
This is the end date.
It, it was waited.
Neither one came.
And that's, that's what's.
Conervin said he was coming, and he didn't show. The other person wrote a letter and said, please deliver this.
Other opinions or not, um, matters?
Still don't know what I'm doing.
I know, that's what I mean. I, I, we've heard where Glenn is at.
You know where I'm at, where I am. I wanna hear.
Especially the Grove Street one, if they have some, that's a.
The Grove Street one, I would say we've asked them to come back in two weeks, so it should be status quo until two weeks.
The answer is no, unless they come back and talk to us about what the long-term solution is.
Yeah, if they say no, they're not coming back, turn the water off.
So if they're coming in two weeks, you can hold off on that shut-off?
Yep.
Is that what I just heard?
I'm big with.
And we had the, the lady, um, that requested the abatement a few months ago, came to the meeting, and we decided no abatement. So maybe we should not turn off the water, tell them they have to be here at the next meeting, and if they're not at that point, then the water's shut off. It's a compromise, and everybody gets treated the same way.
No, that would be to shut off the waters.
Yeah, I would, well, that's what, this other one is to shut off. I, I like treating them both ways. If we're gonna have the one on Grove, we're not gonna shut the water off.
Yeah.
Then we don't shut the water off on this one, because we're basically giving them the same message.
But it may, it may be a no to any one of them, and then the water gets shut off, so they better have a plan B.
I think that's how we've done it before. If you were asking for someone to come in and talk to the board, like even, even the airport traffic clerk, we held off while we were talking with them, didn't we?
Yeah, it didn't happen.
They, yeah, they would come in and talk before shut-offs happened. Different timeframe, but yes.
May not be the answer they, they want, but we still.
We've all looked each other in the eye and heard.
So if I'm hearing the board, right, both requests are, we need more information from the parties, and they're requested at the next meeting. Um, the board could make a decision at that point to disconnect both, um, water meters at that point, or do a payment plan or an abatement.
And if they don't come into those meetings, they're definitely.
It's turned off.
We have no, we have no choice but to follow them.
Well, and, and to, to, to be clear, and the reason we're saying that is because we look at our policies.
Right.
And said, if we were to follow them and make a decision right now, tonight, we would, we would turn down both of those abatement requests. And, and, and.
By the way, it's Joe's recommendation.
It is the recommendation, and I, and I.
It would be the right thing to do.
And.
Other people are being turned off, and they haven't received agreements. This, this week, people are losing their water.
Are losing their water, and because these two said, I wanna abate, their water stays on for two more weeks. I, I understand why you're.
So you're seeing a separate issue?
Well, I'm, I'm saying we're not being consistent.
I guess you.
You turn, you turn it off, and it comes back on when they either make payment or come in and get a different.
How much of a payment?
Total. Was it two hundred dollars for the payment agreement?
I'm just wondering if.
You said he wasn't eligible for a payment.
I'm not saying.
It's the eligibility that's the problem.
Yeah.
He's not eligible.
Right, so it's, it's not twelve, it's not two hundred, it's.
Zero.
Sixteen hundred.
Oh, yeah, pay it all, it'll be done.
Twelve hundred. Right, and that's where I'm having the trouble.
Yeah, I'm just, again, my sense for treating everyone the same.
I think.
There's multiple people that are getting their water turned off that didn't say I wanna.
What's the reason why there's a twelve-month ineligible?
It's, it's the policy. I think it was because twenty eighteen.
We didn't want them to keep.
Keep getting back, you know, back payment, back payment, while they're trying to make a payment plan at the same time. Because it was just rolling into another payment plan.
Well, what we were afraid of, you'd end up with two, two or three years of payments all at once, and you still couldn't swing it. Because then your payment was the same as a month of water, so what was the, or a quarter of water, so it didn't.
So I missed something somewhere. I didn't know there were other people that are already having. So I missed something somewhere, I didn't know there were other people that are already having their water turned off.
There were people with their water turned off.
And policies are created to assure fairness across the board.
Correct.
That's really the, so, um, now I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth, but maybe we should just follow the policies and then we don't get into this. What do we do for this one, what do we do for that one?
That's where I think it's two different requests, we have a request for a payment plan and abatement, and then there's a separate issue of turning the water off, and that's on the manager to decide. The water shut offs, the requests to the board are just.
When he did this.
Well, it is, I mean, it's within Joe's purview for water shut offs, but we're, we're in charge of the abatement request and the payment plan request.
I, follow policy, that's what I'm hearing. We, we will listen to both of them in two weeks.
Well, so if we're following policy, the, uh, request for a payment plan should be denied.
Until October, for this last one.
Correct.
There can be a request after October twentieth.
And for abatement, if, if the family does pay, they can always come back and still ask for the abatement.
That's correct.
Right, it's, they would pay upfront, but then abate it on the backside in two weeks, when they come and speak to the board.
I mean, you really have to follow the policy.
Otherwise.
Otherwise, why have one?
I think we'd have people in here every time we meet, I, I'm saying, okay, I'm gonna spin the wheel and take my chance, because it, because it looks like we're not following the policy.
No, I, no, no. I, I'm not saying, I, I'm not, I'm disagreeing with the, the philosophy of, uh, you know, uh, of, you know, saying no, you, you came to the board, okay, and while the board is considering it, they shouldn't be the door slammed on their face. If, if you make the board inaccessible, then we're not a public body, that's the way I feel. I'm not saying that I agree with yes or no, shut them off, or, or anything like that. I'm just saying that while it's in the board's hands, if we can't come to a decision today, then, you know, if we don't have enough information, then they should, it's a stay of execution, per se, uh, until we do have, and we're to, we're talking about pushing off, you know, for two weeks. You are not, I don't think you're opening the floodgates with that mindset, that there is a stay of execution until we are satisfied. Okay? That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying that they have done right or wrong, or their, their argument is, is good or bad. What I'm saying is that we initially say, well, we, we'd like to hear more. So you get, I, I, I'm saying that you give them a stay of execution for two weeks, and I don't think that's gonna open up a floodgate, request.
But with, with that said.
But I think that applies to the first one.
I can see where the first one needs more information, but the second one, we really have enough to make that decision.
I, we have enough and, and all we're, on the first one, I have enough information to make a decision on the first one, but if it's one where we're saying, hey, we doubt maybe their version of how many times they've been contacted is a little bit different than our version, and you want to hear a little more on that, because I, I looked at what was presented and I've got enough information for both of them. And that, that's why when I'm saying, foot kicking the can down the road.
Right, I'm, see, I'm, I'm saying, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
I didn't want to step, step, step on you.
You're not stepping on me, go ahead.
All I'm saying is that these people, the, the first one, they're new to the town, okay? They, they, I, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, the, the due diligence on ownership of that water line, you know, that, first, first of all, I, I think it should be part of the, uh, the warranty deed, uh, that if they didn't have certain, uh, rights of way, then that, that should go to the lawyer that closed on the property. But, and I'm willing to tell them that. Uh, so, you know, I, I think, you know, you, you, you get a, a person that comes into town, buys a house, and they, they have this unfortunate dilemma, they've, they claim that they have contacted their lawyer to get right of way, okay, to fix the problem, but they are hitting a roadblock, I don't think we should kick them when they're, on the first time that they, uh.
When we talked, we're talking two different things, when we talked the first one, we said, hey, look, invite them back. Even though, and we can invite them back, I still need, there, there's a whole lot of questions I have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll say there's questions, yeah.
But I guess, but the, we're now on, and we already said, the first one, we'll wait, come back. I did hear, because how we got into this conversation is, the water gets turned off tomorrow. I heard some disagreement about whether you turn their water off now. I'm saying, and the reason we're, we're treating them differently than everyone we're turning their water off on is because we feel they're new and they don't know any better.
No, because we asked them to come back and give us more information.
Because we don't have enough information, but I, and I'll go, I, I can bind that.
Right.
I can bind that one.
But I think on this.
On the second one.
We have.
I'm, I'm, I'll make, and that's the one we, we, but I, that's when I make a motion that, uh, we, we don't grant the abatement request.
The payment plan request?
The payment, and because they haven't, the twelve months doesn't live to the policy. Come back, if you want a payment plan, come back and talk and get in touch with Joe after October twentieth.
Okay, is there a second to Glenn's motion? So the motion is to deny the request for a payment plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, discussion on that?
Which unfortunately is gonna be a kind of self fulfilling prophecy where we probably don't collect for a while, and then you get a payment plan.
I, I think so.
Alright, any other questions on that motion? Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, they.
Uh, motion carries.
Joe, was he aware that there's a Zoom?
Uh, he said he was coming to the meeting tonight.
So you didn't answer my question.
Uh, I don't know if he knows there's a Zoom or not. It's, it's on the Facebook page with the Zoom link that's very prominent, uh, as well as the town website, and these four houses that.
His, his wife went on Zoom last week?
I don't know if she has been, I, I don't recall seeing her here, but just not to say.
So we're good with that, and then on the other one, we're requesting that they come back in two weeks to provide more information?
Yep.
Alright, uh, moving on to, uh, policy review, Joe put a draft update of the after hours vehicle policy. Think addressed the concerns, hopefully?
We'll see.
I looked at it when we, we took everything out, there's much there in that policy right now.
Question I have is, uh, are you planning on tracking when you give permission?
Uh, yeah, it, it should be few and far between, but yes.
Okay, you don't sound assertive about that. The reason, the reason I am asking is because I know that there's gonna be a handful of individuals in town who will come into this meeting and fire away at the board. I saw this person, you know, at this location on a Saturday with a town vehicle.
March twenty seventh at nine AM.
Okay, and we are gonna be under fired, right? Why did you give them permission, what was the, and we are not, we don't have the means to do this.
No.
Okay, so you have to be the, the informational center, and it's not going to be acceptable, at least in my view, that you say, well, I don't know, I don't track it.
Yeah, it's, um, again, I've never been asked to use the, the, a vehicle after hours in the last four years, but yes, we can implement a spreadsheet.
Well, but, yeah, the, this, uh, the only issue really was this, this, the, um, the road supervisor, Aaron in this case, uh, it was never an issue with, uh, the police chief. I don't know if Bill takes the vehicle home, I heard, I hear that he does on a fairly regular basis.
Bill, the police chief?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he takes it home every day?
All the time.
Right, okay, so, I'm, I, I don't know that. This, this bulks them into the same category, and I don't, uh, I don't think they're the same personally. I said that at the last meeting, that I unders, I personally understand, uh, the chief. Now, if he was on vacation, if someone said, he's on vacation, why does he have a car? Well, that's a good question, okay, and I wouldn't have an answer for that. But I can pass the red face test every day, why the police chief should take the, the vehicle home. I can't with Aaron. Or if Aaron is on vacation, like this week, or do you give, uh, his, uh, in charge that same courtesy? And, you know, that's, that's the kind of stuff that I can't pass the red face test on personally.
So, so.
Do they know?
No, no, the, the only staff that take a car home is the police, the police chief.
Right, but we're, we're, we're saying that Aaron, and Aaron said at the last meeting that, uh, the public work supervisor is now considered, uh, um, what they'd be calling.
First responder.
First responders, and I, I don't agree with that.
Are there contract issues that supersede the policy in, for instance, the police chief's contract?
Yeah, so for the police chief, yeah, it's in his contract, he takes that car, so this, this wouldn't be applicable to him, and it, it probably shouldn't be taken.
Or just restate the obvious.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with if, what the policy I think was, is written now is intended. When I look at when the policy originally went in, because I still come back to, was it meant that we, part of one of the benefits of being the chief of police or being DPW is you get a car or vehicle to drive back and forth to work, uh, because you don't live in the town, because quite frankly, if my police chief lived in the town of Fairhaven, we wouldn't be having this discussion. If my DPW person lived in the town of Fairhaven, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. So I, I don't know if when the original policy, it was leaning towards, well, we're, we're, we're giving them, because it's part of, it's part of their paying benefits for being there. I understand the policy as I'm reading it here, it says, there's gonna be from time to time, it may make sense to go talk to the town manager and take a vehicle home, and that's, and I think you should be able to track it and all the things that we're talking about.
I don't have a problem, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Glenn, I don't have a problem with the, the, the super, road supervisor, Aaron in this case, taking the vehicle home i- in it, in it, you know, in a snowstorm or something like that, I don't have an issue with that, okay? I just don't want, it, it, you know, it, the verbiage was shall have the access to the vehicle, and I'm saying, no, it's on a, as, as needed basis, the town manager, but I'm saying, we need to make a note on the calendar, he went home, he took it home because of a snowstorm, or something like that. But, you know, the onus will fall on the town manager if, uh, on a Saturday, Aaron was seen with a, uh, the town truck at Home Depot.
Green dump.
Or a green dump, or, you know, at some, you know, some place, and, you know, we will fall under scrutiny as much as you.
No different than our chief of police with a cruiser in the middle of Puntley.
Absolutely.
With the, with the, with the blue lights on, on someone, because he's helping out someone. I'm saying, what is our town vehicle doing in Puntley, being, being used, I know we can come up with a lot of reasons, but all that said and done, I, because this policy was probably beaten to death, I, I, if the intent is for the emergencies, I mean, how it's written, I'm good. My two cents.
Others are fine with it, or?
Do you want?
I don't know if you have to, I don't know if you have to put in there that the town manager shall, uh, be.
Oh, I thought.
Be, uh, responsible for, I don't, you, I'm maybe not tracking, but responsible for, uh, uh.
Administering the policy?
Con, con, uh, confirming, uh, proper use. You know, it's a, a kind of a vague way of saying, you're on the hook for explaining why this person was. It's your, it's your responsibility to give them permission or not. So if they're off, i- if, if they're doing something that's not appropriate, it's on you.
I think that's.
Okay, and, and that's all I'm saying is, they're going to come to us.
Just the, the second sentence, town manager may approve, um, and account for said use of vehicles on a case by case basis, or is it?
I think it's in there.
What's that?
Is, is what you, I was just wondering if what Rod was looking for was in there, in that sentence.
In that sense already.
Unless we, we want to add to that on the end of that, and track any usage, or, I mean, just add a couple more words.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, yeah, you, the town manager may approve, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to make sure that Joe knows that he has to keep track of it because of the handful of people that are always in the right spot.
So what's the word, town manager may approve and?
What did you say earlier, that, that fit really well. You just said it just like three minutes ago.
Confirming.
Confirm?
Were you ready?
Approve and confirm, said use?
Proven.
That's fine.
And what, Joe?
Can we monitor, can you just say monitor?
Oh, yeah, monitor is perfect.
May approve and monitor said use.
How about shall approve and monitor?
Yeah. Shall may.
Sounds good. Alright, is there a motion to approve with, uh, the changes that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the town of Fairhaven after hours vehicle policy with the words in the second paragraph, the town manager, uh, shall approve and monitor said use of vehicle on a case by case basis.
Well, it, you don't want to require him to approve it.
Okay.
May approve and shall monitor.
And shall monitor, okay?
Yeah.
What he said.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is it necessary to say unless other, you know, unless superseded by contract or something? Or is that just?
No.
I don't, I don't think.
Good point.
I don't, I don't know if I would get into talking.
Don't talk about it.
You could say this is not meant to supersede a, a contract.
Or do you not need to?
Contract supersede policy anyway.
It would, right?
The contract.
Cause the board wrote the contract.
I mean, this is a policy and a contract is.
Yeah, no worries, alright, good stuff.
Alright, so motion by Glenn was seconded by Jeff.
No, Rod.
Rod, sorry, Rod, um, with corrections as noted here. Um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries.
How often does, uh, I mean, do you really expect this to happen much?
Based upon, based upon what Aaron said the last meeting, I expect it to happen more often.
No, I do.
No, that conversation.
I, oh, yeah, I, I, I do, I expect.
He's got it in his head that, as a matter of fact, I would expect, uh, that more individuals.
I'll go a step further, I, I think people are gonna use it as license to drive vehicles back and forth to work.
I think it's worth throwing out there that both Bud and Jacks uh, always had the DW truck home.
Yes, but they lived in town.
Lived in.
Within town.
They, they, they lived in town versus miles away.
Alright, um, Joe, if you wanna. How do you want to do it?
Let me clean it up and just bring it back.
Bring it back and we'll sign it at the next meeting?
Yeah, because you've approved it today.
It's approved, but.
Yeah, some, some signal.
Alright, um, parking lot, anything updating in there? Glenn?
Just wanna, would like to add on the parking lot, Munger Road.
Oh, good times.
Yeah, I mean, while we're doing dog park and everything else up there, I just.
Can we put added by Glenn, not Jeff?
So that's, I'm the one who gets.
Don't do that.
By Glenn.
Yep.
Anything else to be added or? Anything else to be added or removed?
What's your, just general policy, open, closed gates, or the whole class?
We've over time talked about Munger Road, about taking and trying to put the millings down and finishing the other piece. We've talked about not having the gate locked on a Class IV road and this whole discontinued versus... The whole discussion, you look in the plan, and we have a lot of people that think that Munger Road is discontinued where it's never been formally discontinued. We got lease from, look at, we ought to address that whole thing.
Sounds good.
Okay, board roundtable? Anybody?
Oh, I guess I have something. I think as a board, we should be more cautious of listening instead of interrupting people all the time. It creates chaos in a lot of ways because if we start doing it, people out here start doing it. Joe's asked a question that he can't respond to. Chris is trying to control a meeting that's, that we've kind of started the chaos on. So just remember, if you're talking, you're not listening. We should all be listening. So that's all. It's not a lecture. Just, I've just noticed that it's getting kind of out of control sometimes. And I did have someone speak to me about speeding on West Street. They feel like it's kind of out of control, and could they have more presence there, especially on dump days, it's bad. On West Street.
Okay, anybody else? Jeff?
Can you look into that, the paint on the line striping? I mean, that is a little concerning that it would be.
It looked pretty thin.
Yeah, I mean, just make sure we did use the, I thought that was the plan, was use the higher quality as well.
Yeah.
We didn't.
No.
No, that were contracts. So who signed off on it?
Who signed off on, DPW did.
Right, so let's make sure that they're...
Aaron?
Let's make sure they're looking at the job that's getting done.
Sure, and I can go take a look too. It's, to be honest, I thought it looked pretty good, but maybe I just didn't see the spot or two.
No, no, I didn't see the spot. I'm reacting to the complaint, so let's go around and just make sure.
No, I, there's some, I was downtown. I mean, it's, it just, it might hold up, but it looks, it looks thin.
Is there, is there a standard?
Yes.
Okay, is, how many mills thick, and is there a measuring? Because it's, it's got to be more objective than subjective.
How do you hold them accountable if there's no standard?
I'm sure that, well, there's a standard for the paint. I don't know about millimeters thickness, but I can, I can check and see.
Is this, the standard for the paint is the kind of paint?
Yeah, the special DOT standard.
But they could skimp on the thickness, potentially. So if, if there is a standard, then maybe we put this in, we may not be able to do anything this time, but maybe we put this in the file, and the next time we have a painting project, we make sure that we change the bid requirements to meet a standard. Mills thick, so that we can hold them to it, because if it's not objective, it's... It's meaningless.
Okay, Glenn, did you have anything?
I had two things brought up to me. One was the memorial triangle that we have out here. The bushes are getting so big that when you're coming in trying to yield in, you can't see through them to see traffic coming. Now, I don't know if that's something that we can have our person who does our mowing, everything, trimming, or whether we'll get the, or whether the legion who planted the bushes, I'm not looking to get someone in trouble for doing, touching something they shouldn't, but I know the bushes are, which were nice when they were first put in, have gotten so big now you can't, you can't see traffic.
I guess I have a comment. It was, you're supposed to yield at the sign, not look over your left shoulder and speed up because you can see the cars coming through the bushes.
So, so the bushes...
There was an accident out there, I don't know, a couple weeks ago. I don't know what the, the whole train of, trail of events was, but I see a lot of people looking over their left shoulder way before the sign, and they go for it.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's a yield. It is a yield.
I, I hear you. Yeah, I'm just...
You've been watching me.
What's that?
You've been watching me.
Yeah, and these were just two, a couple things that were brought up to me.
Yeah.
Okay, what else you got?
The other one was concerned again about the fire station ceiling repairs, man door and main door, and whether there's, that can be looked at.
The fire station...
There's, there's supposed to be some ceiling tile where someone stepped through a ceiling. It's called a man door. I want to ask, what are you talking about? What they're saying is they, that we as the town are responsible for the building, and there's some things that need to be fixed on the fire station side. And my, my question when I was asked that was, well, does the fire station, now, they have a budget. Do they just go and get someone to fix it, or it seems like these have been there for a while. I'm just going to get a phone call this afternoon.
Was this, was this a fire department employee that brought this up to you?
No, no.
I know it doesn't really matter, but...
It was, it was a member of the group in there. I think with the feeling and the vibe of them just saying, hey, look, we're not doing, we're not taking care of our building as well, and whether it's the truth or not, it's a...
Well, I just wonder if they brought it, if someone's brought this up to Joe.
So if it's the, if it's the tiles, I don't know what they did. If it's the tiles upstairs, those have been down for, since I've been here, and the fire department removed them for some reason.
Somebody put their foot through the floor.
Said someone put their foot through the floor.
They were in the ceiling, and they put their foot through the ceiling?
They're locking upstairs, and I think they're...
In their little, yeah, like in their meeting room upstairs, somebody was on top of that inspecting and put their foot through.
They have access to the tile.
Yeah, that doesn't sound...
It was in one of the building maintenance things, inspections. Somebody did that. It's been a long time.
So Joe's going to, Joe will look into it?
No, it was, it was just they're saying that they were, they mentioned the three things, and like I said, I don't, and I'm saying, quite frankly, I don't know whether we, whether that's something we do as a town as being responsible for the building and doing that, or whether it could be just our expectation of saying, well, if you've got something, someone through the ceiling, get it fixed.
I think it's always been through here.
Through here.
Yeah, I mean, if the fire department has...
A concern, they come to Joe, and Joe, I'm bored, right?
Yes, but no. They, the fire department be like, I got a hole in my ceiling. We want to fix it. Okay, go fix it. Like, Joe's not going to organize repairs for the fire department's break room upstairs. The fire department will do that, find contractors, give me a PO, just like DPW says, I got a broken truck. Joe doesn't go and find out with a repair guy to fix the truck. You know what I mean?
What about, what about to like finish the, is the job all alone with the beam?
No, so that's a different, that's a different subject. That does need to still be finished, and we've contacted contractors for that, but contractors are backed up right now.
And that could be, and I think what I felt was there was some frustration that there's some things that need some upkeep, and it's not happening. I asked them, I said, did you go talk to the chief?
Which should, that's...
Yeah, I said, that'd be the place I would start, and I'd let the chief take and get with you and figure it out.
Although I'm going to, to be 100% honest, that little, it's, I don't know, maybe six squares in the ceiling in a kitchen they don't use, if that was very expensive, that would be a not worthwhile use of town funds. It's, it's been there for, I don't know, 10 years?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, it's been, okay, five years. It's been there since before I got in there.
All right, Joe's going to look into it.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, and again, just, and yeah, those, that's all I have.
Must be different than what I was thinking.
All right, Jeff, expenditure reports.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant $64,057 and...
52 cents. Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod for the general fund warrant. Questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries.
Motion to pay the payroll warrant $36,494 and 37 cents.
Motion for discussion. Well, not, second for discussion. He made the...
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod to authorize the payroll warrant. Discussion, questions on that?
It seems to be, I'm going to use the word artificially higher than I'm used to seeing. But I can't get, I don't know how to get from the detail sheet, the total in the detail sheet, to the warrant amount. And I'm not necessarily looking for you to tell us right now, but if we wanted to, if I wanted to look at that and say, well, why is it artificially high? I can't get there. There's a missing piece. For instance, the warrant is $36,000, but the totals only add up to 40, or 32,000.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't look at it and see where...
I'll bring a calculation. I'll bring a calculation so that way we...
One's for electronic deposit, one's for, one's for checks. Thirty-two, I think are electronic amounts.
They are.
And then here, like, you got a check for 78, a check for 495, and that's the four.
Okay, those two are, okay.
Does that add to 36,494?
36,4...
494.
Okay, well, that's the answer. I couldn't...
It's what it seems. It's an electronic versus a...
Okay, then I was looking at the 32 and saying, well, that's the grand total.
Yeah, there's also a calculation in there where they take, where they're, the town portion of the taxes as opposed to employee taxes. It makes that look completely screwy.
That should be in there.
Okay.
It is in there, but it makes it look weird, but I struggle with that too, so...
Okay, so if it's just the combination of the two right columns, I mean, I was thinking the way you look at a sheet like that is the right-hand column is the total. Okay, so, but it's still, I'm still making the comment that seems like we're still artificially high. We went from 28, 29-ish to 32, 31, 32-ish, and we're at 36-ish.
That's what I'm, that's what I was saying.
It, and I don't really, I mean, I don't have a...
Well, you could figure it out. If you just looked at the summer employees and the double salaries for the front office and the student workers, add those up, the, don't we, the student workers?
Well, that, isn't that part of summer rec?
You mean the recreation, the rec department?
Didn't we hire a couple for the water plant?
A water sewer, yeah, but that, that would be, you would see that continuing.
Well, if we could just like get the totals of those three, I think we might find the answer there.
Right.
It's, and there, there has been a little overtime with DPW, so you'll see that there at this...
But I don't see, that's just mixed in, right?
It's part of the...
You'd have to pull the actual sheets.
It's not a big number, so...
It adds up.
I guess nickels and dimes do add up, but...
No, I think it's going to be like $2,000 or something.
And for what, overtime?
When I look at this, it's up about, doesn't it feel that way to you?
Well, yeah.
This was 30...
Yeah, it's up four to $5,000.
Year over year.
Yeah, well, actually even more, yeah, it's a little bit more than, we, I know, it was an explainable jump from 28, 9, 9, which is what it was year over year, okay? It was an explainable jump to get to 31-ish, but now we are still way up high. And I guess I'm just...
Keep your eye on it.
I'm looking for a little analysis, a quickie analysis, what Carol just mentioned. You know, how much are these individuals and those individuals, and it...
And how much of it is going away shortly to most of it, yeah.
Right, right. It, and it doesn't have to be to the penny. It's, it's never going to be, you're never going to have that kind of granularity in an analysis, but if we're getting close and it gets you back down to the 31-ish, at least I'll feel better.
So are we, do you want me to analyze and report?
Well, analyze the payroll, so, and do what Carol mentioned, suggested, you know, the, the summer hires, the...
Coverage for the new person.
If there is overtime of any significance. I mean, you mentioned overtime. I have, what would they be doing overtime for on a summer?
If guys are on vacation, will have to have somebody cover down, so you got, the vacation pay still comes out of pay and then over to you, so... And this is that time of year when folks are taking vacations, so, especially at transfer stations, you see that a lot.
And I understand that there's, that comp time, if there's any of that, that comes out of overtime.
Yes, it would, because it's time and a half.
But we, we got nailed a few times in my memory of comp time, cops usually. When a cop left, we got nailed for a ton of overtime. But that was a blip on the radar. This is a constant new level.
Oh, I'll dig in, and we'll see what we find.
Okay.
Checkbook...
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't.
All in favor of the payroll warrant?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Checkbook status?
$484,903 and 21 cents.
Glenn, did you have a? No need for executive session. Anything else? Are we ready to adjourn?
There's not a lot of overtime.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm seconding it.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries.